Good evening. We're going to call a meeting to order at 6:30 on April the 7th. Regular City Commission meeting. We begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Matt McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, which will be led by Vice Mayor Casello. If you'll please rise.
Let us pray. O most holy eternal God, Father, the Creator, Maker of all mankind, as we just celebrated Resurrection Sunday, although we just into a couple of days into a new week, we still have a lot to say thank you for. Sometimes we send things to come to try us, only to see just how strong we are. But once hurts come, help us to be able to get over them. Help us to love mankind the way that you love us, in spite of all of our shortcomings. Help us to look beyond all barriers that we might have, and let us do what is pleasing in your sight. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You can back up, sir.
We'll now go to Agenda Approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? We have a couple of items here. First item I have is, under Announcements, Community and Special Events, Item D, which is the proclamation for National Library Week, I'd like to move that up under Item A. There's A, and then we'll do D after A. Okay? Then, there's a Vice Mayor.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to table the, under Legal, 13C, until we have our closed-door session on the subject matter. I think that'd be...
That's the C is Discussion of the City of Boynton Beach's Red Light Camera Program. The Vice Mayor's asking to table that until after the closed-door session, which has been requested, and B just above.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, is this where we pull Items on Consent Agenda?
You can, if you want.
Okay, I'd like to pull Item 6A.
6A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 6A, got it.
And also, under First Public Hearing, that should have been tabled to April 21st.
We're going to do that.
Going to do that, okay.
Item A, under Public Hearing.
You're going to do it.
First public hearing for Sky, that's, we need to pull that because the advertisements didn't get out in time.
Okay.
So, that'll be tabled. That's Item 9A. Okay? Any others? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Agenda as amended.
As amended.
Second.
I have a motion second, all. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to informational items by members of City Commission. Tonight, I'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was fortunate enough to attend the Poinciana Gardens plaque unveiling, also the groundbreaking ceremony for the Family Dollar. I also attended the City Annual Wellness, Safety, and Benefit Fair for the Employees here in Boynton, and I was absolutely knocked off my feet by how much they had to offer. I was the only elected official at the Vietnam Welcome Home by the Veterans Council. I know it was the last-minute notice, but I'm just saying, we did have representation. I was there to represent us. And also, I attended this morning the April Network and OverEas at Los Ventanas this morning, put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Mr. Merker.
I pass.
Vice Mayor, Casello?
Past week, I've met with Davy Camiller and Bonnie Miskel. Also attended the groundbreaking for the Family Dollar Store, and I think that's going to be a great project for the neighborhood, and hopefully it's the catalyst to some more continued growth. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out to the Boynton Lynx Golf Club. This Saturday, they're going to have a tournament for breast cancer at Playford Pink. They've been having it for the last 10, 11 years. They've raised over $100,000 anyway. It's going to continue again this Saturday, so all the ladies, put on your pink and get out there. We're on tap, we'll give you a free lesson. Also, this Saturday, we have the annual Boynton Beach Fire Department Fishing Tournament down the intercoastal, and, once again, I'll be a chili judge in the chili cook-off. Looking forward to that.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
I attended the Family Dollar Groundbreaking, and also the South Central Regional Wastewater Pension Board Meeting, followed by the South Central Regional Wastewater Board Meeting.
Okay. You want to back up? Go ahead.
I'd just like to bring something up. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention. April 11th is going to be an event, I call it history. It's the subject matter of the passing of Martin Luther King. Officially, it was April 4th, 1968, when he was assassinated. We're having this year the first, I call it, history lesson on the subject matter. And what this does, as far as I'm concerned, the more you learn about the past, it brings people together. And that, I believe, is the purpose of this, to understand the thought process, the making, and what makes someone have such energy and fight in him or her to bring and absorb, excuse my hesitation, and absorb the pain that a person goes through when they believe in something. Life is, as far as I'm concerned, is finding something to believe in and making it happen. So, April 11th, if my memory is right, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I think it's that essential for a city like ours, which is diverse, which brings all people, all types of people, together. Thank you.
I'd like to complete the announcement. It's going to be held on Ocean Avenue, the M5 Theater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My memory serves me right. Thank you.
Okay. I also attended the groundbreakings that were referred to, and also the sewer board meetings. One thing I want to announce, on April the 24th and 25th, the First United Methodist Church, which is right across the street here from City Hall, will be holding a training class for people interested in working with children, child survivors of disasters, of any disasters. It'll be actually, it'll start on Friday and go through Friday night into Saturday, and it's for people 18 years and older. They're bringing in professionals to do the training. So if you'd be interested in working with children who survived a natural disaster, you can sign up for that. Reverend Edwards is the pastor, and I did ask them to bring some brochures. I don't think they got them here tonight. But it isn't till the 24th and 25th. We'll have another meeting on the 21st of April, so I'll see if I can get them to have the brochures here by then, if you're interested in doing that thing. I told them I would announce it. Okay. Nothing else? Okay. Moving on, we'll go to Announcements and Community and Special Events Presentations. Our first presentation will be a recognition and presentation of a Boynton Beach Fire Rescue Department civilian citation to Mr. Richard Salter for his heroic action on March 16th, 2015, at 6415 North Ocean Boulevard, Oceanfront Park. And the fire chief is going to help us make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Ray Carter. I'm your fire chief. Tonight, this recognition is about something special that happened on March 12th, 2015. Annually, the Fire Department has a ceremony where we recognize our employees and civilians for special things they do throughout the year. That happens usually right at the end of February. Well, March 12th this year, something very special for Boynton Beach happened at Oceanfront Park, at our beach. Young Jimmy Charles here was out with his family, visiting the beach, swimming. And it's so common this time of year, there were rip currents in progress at the beach. Jimmy was swimming, struggled a bit, was pulled out by a rip current, continued to struggle, and actually tired to the point where he went unconscious in the surf. Fortunately for Jimmy and for his family, Mr. Salter, who is here to my right, Richard Salter, was at the beach at the same time. He saw what was going on, recognized the need for assistance, entered the water at great risk to his own safety because of the rip currents, and managed to get Jimmy from the surf after he had been submerged under the water and unconscious for about two minutes, brought him up onto the beach, was getting ready to start CPR when Jimmy started to spontaneously breathe on his own. As a result of Mr. Salter's actions that day, Jimmy is with his family, celebrating and continuing to enjoy life. And I want Jimmy to help me present the civilian citation from Boynton Beach Fire Rescue Department to Mr. Salter, because Mr. Salter, that day, saved his life.
He just asked me to say a few words. I'm really not a guy of many words, but I guess the main reason why I wanted to come out here tonight was, is because I just wanted to let people know that, you know, if you see something going on, do something. Because there were just a lot of people that just weren't doing anything. And, you know, we've got to step up, you know? You've got to step up. And I was there on the beach line, and I knew that if I didn't go out in that water, I wouldn't be able to live with myself, because I knew that Jimmy would probably be gone. And I'm just really grateful that he's still here with us, and that his parents still have their son. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. That's just great. Okay, now we're going to have the National Library Week. If Craig Clark is here, join me down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. This, joining me here is Craig Clark, our Director of Libraries. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming, state-of-the-art technology, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology assistance and access to downloadable content like eBooks. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, proclaim National Library Week, April 12th through the 18th, 2015. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the world of library resources available for free at the Boynton Beach City Library. National Library Week, in witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 7th day of April, 2015.
Yes, I can't top that last wonderful story, but I'll try my best. Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, for your continued support of the library. I'd also like to thank the great staff that we have at the library and the Library Advisory Board. They're a bunch of wonderful people, and I'm very proud of all of them. I just want to share two quick new services that we offer at the library. One is called Transparent Languages. You can go on our website at boyntonlibrary.org and learn up to 80 different foreign languages. And there's also ESL programs for speakers of other languages, and that's free, and that's at your own pace. You can work on that from home or at the library. Also, we have a new program called Xenio. It's online downloadable magazines. You can download free magazine issues to your smartphone or tablet, and it will email you when the next available issue is ready to download. So please take advantage of those free services at the library. Thank you.
Next one is to announce the Great American Cleanup of 2015, and ask our community to take part in this event by joining thousands of volunteers of all ages across America who will be taking part in efforts to clean up and improve their local communities. Boynton Beach Oceanfront Park is one of several sites in the county that was chosen to be part of the project, and the cleanup will begin at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 2nd. And Boynton Beach Ocean Inlet Cleanup will begin at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 25th. Next, I'm going to announce the, and I'm, our Assistant City Manager, Grease, is going to be chiming in here with me on this, because this all has to do with this project's. Announce the City of Boynton Beach's participation in the U.S. Department of Transportation's National Mayor's Challenge for Safer People, Safer Streets. Grease?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Doing the U.S. Department of Transportation National Mayor's Challenge for Safer People and Safer Streets are part of the City of Boynton Beach Earth Week activities, along with the Great American Cleanup and several other ones that we'll be talking about in just a minute. Through a complete street approach, the design of our city's Greenway, Blueway, and Trails Mapping Project, which we will be completing by the end of this year, we are working to identify and address in design the barriers to make streets safe and convenient for all road users. We will use designs that are appropriate to the context of the street and its users, and we plan on taking advantage of opportunities to create and complete bed, pipe, pedestrian, bicycle networks throughout the city through our planned maintenance and through available grant funding.
Thank you, Grease. Now, we're going to proclaim April 22nd, 2015, as Arbor Day and announce the celebration. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2015, as Arbor Day in the City of Boynton Beach. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed the 7th day of April in the year 2015.
Accepting the proclamation, sir, is Glenda.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This year, we'll be celebrating Arbor Day at 9:00 a.m. at Boynton Lakes Park with St. Joe's fifth-grade students. We'll be planting four green buttonwood trees and one Royal Poinciana. It'll last about two hours, and welcome anyone who'd like to come out and plant trees with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. Next, we'll proclaim April 2015 as Water Conservation Month, and announce water conservation activities as part of Earth Week and Earth Month. Whereas, water is basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas the State of Florida Water Management Districts and the City of Boynton Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas April, typically a dry month when water demands are highest, is annually designated as Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference and help by efficiently using water, thus promoting a healthy economy and community. And now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Water Conservation Month, and call upon each citizen and business in the City of Boynton Beach to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach to be fixed the 7th day of April, 2015. Accepting the proclamation is, Colin?
Colin, our Utilities Director. Thank you. All right. You know, I can't come up here and not say a few things. So, we did want to talk a little bit about water conservation. It is very important to utility, because it not only preserves our precious resource of water, which in South Florida is a precious resource, but it also saves a little bit on the pocketbook, because if we can conserve water, we can actually keep our rates stable and low. So, I just want to talk a little bit about, I never give up an opportunity to talk about programs we're doing, so I wanted to talk a little bit about some programs that we do to help encourage water conservation. The first one we do, which I think is really powerful, is Water Wise, which is a program we do in school and 5th graders, and we do about, it's presented to about 1,300 5th graders a year in our school system. And basically, what it does, it's a program that the teachers get to go through with their students to learn about water conservation. The students will get a kit like this, that then they learn how to use it, and it's things like conservation pieces, and I'm spilling stuff all over the place, but conservation pieces, conservation stuff for their sinks, for their toilets, for things like that, learning how to detect leaks, finding leaks, and really preserving water in their homes. And what we found is, is over 40% of the students actually participate and actually find savings in their homes, water savings, and take care of those savings. So it really is a very successful program, and we get a report every year with the statistics, and it's pretty exciting to see students buying into this. And one of the things they do is they test before the program and after the program on their knowledge, and their knowledge goes from about 40% passing to about 90% just in the program. So, and teachers give it rave reviews, so we like doing that. That's something we support. We also do a lot of things. We do a lot of brochures for water savings that we have, you know, how to landscaping to save water, you know, Household Guide to Water Conservation. We do coloring books to teach kids, you know, we've got lots of these to give out, coloring books. We have a program that is, that we use for the hotels, which is a self-audit, so, you know, if you've ever been in a hotel and you see these little tags that say, "Please use your towel." That's something we try to promote at our hotels. It kind of saves water if we can keep people from washing so much laundry and all that, so if they can reuse their towel a couple nights. So we do all these programs, actually do encourage people to do water conservation, because again, it does help us. If we can conserve the potable water, we don't have to build more plants, and we don't build more plants, we don't spend the money, so it does, in the long run, save us money.
And in addition to those activities that we do throughout the year, for Earth Week and Earth Month, we have two additional activities that we are doing for the citizens of the Boynton Beach. One is the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, and this is a competition, and it encourages our residents to take a series of informative, easy-to-use pledges online to conserve water, energy, and other natural resources. The campaign is designed to save costs for the consumer, save infrastructure and operating costs for the city, and promote drought resiliency and protect watershed and ecosystems. So it's very, very easy. Residents just need to go to www.mywaterpledge.com, and it's just an easy four-step conservation pledge on behalf of the city. Now, the really cool thing about this is that the city, with the highest percentage of residents who take the challenge, the participants, meaning you, the residents, can win hundreds of prizes. So, we're encouraging everybody to go online, take the My Water Pledge at mywaterpledge.com, and if our city wins in our population category, then you could win prizes as well. The other activity is part of the Utilities Department ongoing education and outreach program. In the month of April, we're going to have a water conservation workshop on April 23rd at the library program room. We will have presentations by the South Florida Water Management District, the Lake Worth Drainage District, Mr. Colin Groff, and we'll also have some do-it-yourself tips on drought resiliency, landscaping, and also low-flow plumbing.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Thank you. Since we're talking about water conservation, it's never too late, and it's never too early. If we listen at the news of what is happening in California, they should let all of us know that it's never too late, never too early. We all need to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. The City of Boynton Beach continues to receive significant positive news coverage on one of its premier schools, Galaxy E3 Elementary School. Recently, Storyology Studios created an 11-minute promotional video on Galaxy E3 Elementary School funded by Quantum Foundation, the school's biggest private donor. Storyology Studios produces original content for TV, schools, and the web. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Ed Capitano, the Principal of Galaxy E3 Elementary School, to give you a private viewing of this video.
We will not be tested, right?
You will not be tested at this time. We'll see. Mayor Taylor, City Commissioners, thank you very much for having us here. I'm Ed Capitano, proud Principal of Galaxy E3 Elementary School. Galaxy E3 was an original school built in 1958, and it was revitalized, it was modernized, it was knocked down and rebuilt, and it has been a shining star ever since. It truly is a jewel of a school. With me tonight, I have Ms. Melissa Trinchini. She is our reading coach. She just wants to give you a little bit update on our Summer School Success Academy that we are doing with our children in our community. And our community is just a fantastic community, and with that, I want to share some exciting news for Galaxy E3 Elementary School and the City of Boynton Beach. I have just received about three hours ago the great news that we are now officially a Platinum Lead Certified School. And what the...
The first in Florida. The first one in Florida, the first one in Florida, public and private. So that is in the heart of Boynton Beach, and we are just excited tremendously to share that news with you. I would talk more about the school, but I don't want to take the thunder away from the video, and with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Melissa Trinchini.
Hi there. We just wanted to talk a little bit about the Summer Success Program that we started at Galaxy this year. It'll be the first year that we are starting the initiative, but we hope to do it every year. We are hopefully going to teach our community and our family members about summer slide, which is an unfortunate thing that happens, that most of us are aware of. Students can lose up to two months of reading instruction during the summer when they're not in school. So we're hoping to initiate parents and students to be intrinsically motivated to do work at school, or work at home over the summer by giving them a summer success kit. And the kit will include up to four books on their level, so by the end of the summer, if they've read those books, they're not losing any of their reading level, their motivation. We're hoping this is the beginning of starting their own at-home library, and then educating parents how they can be involved in a... And then, educating parents how they can be involved in the summer by encouraging them to read in the car, with pets, with brothers and sisters, and just trying to make everyone feel as if they're part of the education of their children. So, we're really excited to start that, and that will occur on May 6th at 5:30 at Galaxy Elementary.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to start a promotional video. Thank you. [Music] Galaxies are filled with stars, glowing balls of gas that make them shine. But what makes this galaxy, Galaxy E3 Elementary, that is, a shining beacon of 21st-century learning? I don't know. But I'm Will Try, and today, I will try to find out. When you think of a school, you probably think of learning. And you probably think that learning takes place inside the school. But what if the entire school is a teaching tool? Could that be the secret to 21st-century learning? But what if it was also one of the healthiest and most environmentally friendly schools in the country? And what if that school had incredible community support and collaboration? Ah! It's enough to blow your mind. Galaxy E3 Elementary. Hold please. Just look at their name. Galaxy E3. And that stands for Environmental Engineering and Energy. And those are our three choice academies that we host here at Galaxy Elementary School. It's pretty fitting that one of the E's stands for energy because that's just what you feel when you walk into the school. The energy of the students, the teachers, the principal, and the community. It took a lot of energy and support to make this school happen because Galaxy was actually going to be torn down until the community came together to save it.
So, we started doing that with a small group of community activists, if you will. Reverend Lance Chaney from St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, Virginia Ferris with the Historical Society and the City Library were really part and parcel of helping us get together and raise funds because we understand that if you don't have good schools, you can't have a good community.
Construction started on the school in 2010, and it was completed and reopened in 2013.
If you create a great school, it is a source of economic development for our community. And what we decided to do here is really provide a very unique experience and education that creates not only a great opportunity for the students that are here, but also a phenomenal development opportunity to bring the families back. Bring the families back and create not just a sustainable learning environment, but a sustainable community. So, we're very proud of the fact that the building has helped revitalize this section of Boynton Beach.
And what they came up with is amazing. The second you walk in the door, you see this alligator. And it's a real one. It's funny because the kids say, "No, Mr. Capitano, it must be fake. I could see three cracks in it." And we're like, "No, that's the safety lines holding it." We talk about native species like our American alligator, our whale shark, and then we also talk about the invasives like the Burmese python. But wait, there's more. This is just the entrance to the school. It gets even better. All schools have cafeterias, but Galaxy's cafeteria is also a wonderment center.
The dining room is also a huge science exhibit. So, the labs that we have in that space, that are all about the intermixing of those spaces and creating the very wonderment of science.
The biggest private donor that we had was the Quantum Foundation. And it was important to them that the school have a place where kids can go and learn about science and the environment. And that gave birth to the concept of a wonderment center.
It was an opportunity for us to promote STEM, the science disciplines, and for us, we're a health, we're a healthcare foundation. So, that eventually will lead kids into healthcare careers eventually down the road.
The only difference with these cylinders, they're all 20 pounds, all four of them, is the number of pulleys. It really gives them an understanding. You can tell them that the pulleys will, you know, make work easier, but when they feel it, then it's, then it's real.
That's so easy.
We have a rocket, and we're going to talk about force.
Three, two, one. Whoa! Ah! Oh!
So, the walls teach, the spaces teach, the ceilings teach. It's just everywhere around you. And the idea is if you can engage the child, you'll remember.
Well, this must be it, right? The thing that makes Galaxy Elementary a star of 21st-century learning? Well, maybe. But wait, there's more, and it's right around this corner. Follow me. This is the Warren Hahn Science on a Sphere exhibit. It's like having a planetarium in the middle of the school.
This is just a great way for the kids to learn about science in a way more engaging environment than in a textbook or just in the classroom.
Over 700 videos provided by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration provide students with a 360-degree view of planets, tides, phases of the moon, and so much more.
We're the only elementary school in the entire world that has one of these.
The wonderment center is awesome, and the Science on a Sphere is incredible. But there are even more amazing features that make Galaxy such a unique school. There are smart boards in every classroom, iPads and computer stations.
As soon as I got to this school and started using this technology, I knew I wanted to be an engineer.
Galaxy even has a 3D printing lab and robots. Robots!
Good morning, Galaxy E3 Elementary School. How are you today?
All this technology must be the key to 21st-century success, right? But wait, there's more. Just look at these classroom doors. Well, no, there's nothing projected or flashing or moving on them, but they do open up. And that lets the classroom spread out into the hallway and allows for collaborative learning.
You have to have space collaborate so people collaborate. So, those classrooms open up into that area, and you have an ability of getting together and working on projects you wouldn't otherwise have in a separate classroom.
What's 32 divided by 8?
Check out this saltwater fish tank. The tank was donated by Living Color and featured on National Geographic's Fish Tank Kings. The fish tank is another great example of hands-on learning and a great way to teach about science, the ocean, and the environment. The 30 stands for environment. And Galaxy is one of the most environmentally friendly schools in the country.
We're 42% more efficient than, than the baseline school in the U.S. Well, what's behind me is Galaxy's ice plant. And this makes the cooling that cools the school during the daytime. And the ice is manufactured at night when the power bill is at its lowest.
So, that's where we have a big, big savings in energy, and that's where you'll really see the eco-footprint of this school drop.
So, here at Galaxy, we've also incorporated photovoltaic technology, which is all the PV panels on the drop-off canopy in the front of the school. And what, what those panels do is they convert the sun's energy directly into electrical current, which we would not have been able to do without Florida Power and Light.
This area of environmental education, it's just a great natural fit for project-based, hands-on learning that students really get behind. They don't want to read about science, they want to do science. And with a building like this, and with those kinds of projects, that's precisely what they're doing.
So, what is it? What's the secret for successful 21st-century learning? Is it the passionate faculty dedicated to a hands-on STEAM curriculum? The lead design? The technology? A building that's also a learning tool? Or is it all of this coming together in a big bang of collaborative support that formed Galaxy E3? Well, yes. That's the formula for a school that inspires a passion for learning. These students have been given the tools and opportunities they need to succeed. They're ready, excited, and prepared for what's ahead.
When I grow up, I want to be somebody that's working with technology.
I want to be a chemist.
I want to be an engineer.
I want to be a doctor.
I want to be a nurse.
I want to be an artist.
I want to be a scientist.
I want to be a teacher.
I want to be a paleontologist when I grow up, and they dig up dinosaur bones.
It's like a dream come true to go to this school.
Stephen Hawking said, "Look up at the stars, not down at your feet. Try to make sense of what you see and wonder about what makes the universe exist. Be curious." By providing a world-class school designed to inspire curiosity and wonder, we're giving the stars in this galaxy a chance to shine their very brightest. I'm Will Try, some science guy. Thanks for watching, and remember, stay curious, there's always more in store. Thank you. You can see why I'm very proud principal, and I invite everyone out to Galaxy E3 Elementary School. Please, we'll give you a tour. And for those that have children of elementary age, I suggest you run, don't walk, get them into that school. It is absolutely amazing. What you see is what you get, and those student lines are not rehearsed. That is the children speaking from the hearts. They are just, they have options, and that's what we provide. We provide a future of options for our children. So, please, thank you again for having us here tonight.
Mr. Capitano, I just want to say, I've had the pleasure of touring the school at least three times now. And even the governor of Florida has toured that school. I was there for that. And I can tell you, we've had city managers and some elect officials from, of the 38 different cities in this county, and they are blown away. We are the envy of this entire county with this school, and we couldn't be more proud. And I want to thank you and all of your staff for doing a fantastic job. Keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to public audience. Anybody in the public who wants to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you give your name and address for the record, and try to eliminate, limit your comments to three minutes. Good evening.
Right. Mr. Mayor, just before he comes, I'd like to make an announcement, you know, and that is that I have reached the right old age where I'm now 66 at the end of this year, and I am a member of the Boynton Beach Senior Center downtown. We are the OP. We're not called old people, we're called older professionals. So, nobody call me old, I'm an older professional. And I just want to say, if you haven't taken a part, if you're able to go down to the Boynton Senior Center, please come down. You're missing a treat. They have a lot of activities. And one of my little heart passions right now, I'm learning how to play bridge. I played 12 hands the other day, so I think I'm off to a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next meeting's down there on the 20th. You all invited.
Good evening. My name's Harry Woodworth. I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place. I'm the president of INCA. Just want to give our progress report on North Federal Highway, which we took on this, this year. Before I do that, I'd like to thank the mayor and the commission for the support that we saw this week on the Sunset and the article on the safer roads, and was mentioned here again tonight. That's pretty cool. That was one of the reasons that we got started on federal was the sidewalks were all busted. You couldn't ride a bike down there without getting run over, and it's nice to see the city stepping up on that stuff. Also, you guys followed up on the America, Mayor Gass letter we sent, and I appreciate that. Someday, they'll actually respond, and we'll see what they're going to do there. But it's nice to see the, the city stepping up on that. Anyhow, the progress on that, the section of North Federal, we're down to 17 poles. FPNL has finished everything they can remove. DOT has finished all the sidewalks. You can now walk from Boynton Beach Boulevard all the way up to Gateway on a smooth sidewalk, which you've, have been able to do since I've lived here. There's 17 poles left. Five of those are empty. Miracle of Miracle Comcast showed up and moved their stuff over. So, we're now down to 12 poles. FPNL pulled the five that are empty sometime in the next day or two, they said. Fortunately, they're all right in front of the Yatsoan Plaza, so as he's refurbishing that, that'll all be clean now, look a lot better. AT&amp;T says they'll be along sometime in May. By the end of May, they'll be done. FPNL will then pull those poles out. They're coming back as they go now. They stopped with that temporary patching and all that silliness with the blacktop, and they're just cementing the holes and smoothing the sidewalks and cutting out whole sections in it. It's just quite an improvement. See a lot of people up on the weekends there. I guess the only thing, I guess we're still looking for is Public Works has gotten the quotes back, according to Jeff, on the redoing the plannings, that's dead and dying plants that are still up that way, and also on pressure cleaning the paver bricks. He indicated to me that that's just a matter of finding the priority and the budget to do that work. Would ask that if there's any shekels laying around the place, maybe we could afford to do some of that. Maybe Arbor Day would be a great day to replant some of that stuff that's died up there because that road's going to look really, really awesome come about June when we get done with the, the last of those poles. Finally, I guess I just wanted to say, we've kind of taken up another challenge on the road. I think some of you saw the letter. The, the U-Haul parking has just been ridiculous for the last five years up there. And as you talk about safe roads and stuff, the, the southbound bike lane is perpetually blocked by U-Haul trucks. They park illegally on the bridge, they park all the way down there, and that's probably legal because there's no signs up. So, I called DOT, got them engaged in that. They're reviewing it now to see what they can do, apparently because that's not a, a city road, there's some this going on. But I know we're in favor of on-street parking. It's not an on-street parking issue, this is the business has spilled out onto the street. It's ridiculous. And, and it would be one of the first things you could do to save for biking is get the truck out of there because the minute you come to the truck, you got to go out into the traffic lane. The speed limit on that section of federal highway means nothing to anybody. So, you know, if you're not in the bike lane, that's scary enough when you have to go out over into the traffic, it's just ridiculous. Plus, you can't make a U-turn there when you come out of the car wash. If you've got anything bigger than an SUV, and there's a U-Haul truck parked right next to it, which there is many, many times, all traffic stops as you do a multi-point turn with your boat or your truck. And even their returning U-Hauls, it's not uncommon. It's just silly, and that's something we could do. So, anyhow, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to give you updates on this, and we'll keep working together and getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before you go, I'd like to make one comment, that is, in regards to the Rolling Green Project that you've been speaking about, hopefully that the city will get engaged and put up a fence or something so that we can get rid of those garbage cans from I-95. Sir, I do appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff is doing over there for INCA to make me look good. Thank you, sir.
Well, we're not doing this alone. I want to thank the city people too because everybody's been really responsive. I mean, I know sometimes that we complain a little bit, but, you know, that's just part of the deal. Thanks.
Jeff, Jeff King, 743-8 Northeast 12th Terrace, Boynton Beach. That's Mariner Village on the intercoastal, about half-mile north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. So, I'm also a member of INCA. The INCA group is basically the homes, condominiums, and townhomes east of US-1, north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, the majority of which are intercoastal communities. So, I moved to, a little story to start off to make a point here. I moved to Boynton Beach in 1982, out of college, got hired by Motorola. The corporate Realtor took us on a tour of Boynton Beach, and they showed me Mariner Village. So, I promptly fell in love with it, and the Realtor promised, "Oh, Jeff, believe me, Boynton's the next Boca. This, this federal highway area is going to be cleaned up. Before you know it, it's going to be absolutely beautiful." Unfortunately, I didn't see much progress until about the last five years. In the last five years, honestly, I have seen a lot of progress, and especially in the last six months. So, after I retired from Motorola, I became a Realtor. Yeah, I'm one of them. So, everybody in the state of Florida is a Realtor. But my strategy is basically, instead of getting asked the question about federal highway when I show property on the intercoastal, I field the question in advance saying, "You know, you're my client, I'm going to tell you what I like, and I'm going to tell you what I don't like about every property that I'm going to show you." And I only do ocean and intercoastal properties. So, we're talking Ocean Ridge, Manalapan, Boynton, et cetera, on the mainland, but primarily intercoastal property. So, there's no sense in taking someone into a 500,000, million, $2 million place and not addressing federal highway. Sometimes, when I talk about homes and condos, I say, I'll tell you the positive and the negative. The negative is I don't like the carpet, but you got to have a solution. I say, "Look, for tile or wood, we stick it in here, it's five grand. Done, next subject." On US-1, I've got to tell these people upfront... On US-1, I've got to tell these people upfront, and if I don't, I'll just flat-out lose the deal. Nine out of 10 times, people can't deal with it. So I've got to have a solution, and the solution is to tell these clients everything that's currently happening on US-1. And there's a lot of things happening, and it's getting a lot better. So just to reiterate what Harry just mentioned, we have been engaging heavily, very heavily, with Vivian and the CRA, Jeff Livergood, our Commissioner Mac McCray. We've been engaging everybody in the city, and we're making big progress. And I'm extremely satisfied with the direction that we're moving, and I just urge everyone to keep moving in that direction. I have a vested interest in this. I've lived here since 1982, and I'm not leaving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, everyone in their respective places. Reverend Bernard Wright, 713 Northwest 2nd Street. As a matter of concern, I just want to speak about the Denton Pool that's being rehabbed. I happen to be out there with my boy, and that pool is an integral part of my upbringing. And I was talking with the crew that was refurbishing it. And I want to commend the city that there's two ways they could have done it, and they're doing it the most expensive way, which is a better way, but there's a corner that seems to be cutting. One of the guys said they're not putting non-tile, non-skid tile on the steps, and that is necessary. It's a code requirement. And before y'all finish that, I want to just make sure that that is done, because it's a safety issue. I spoke to you about it, Mr. Mayor. So before they finish that pool, we're appreciative of y'all.
Already passed the information on.
Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I have one brief announcement this evening. This Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. is the 2015 Princesses and Superheroes Day. At the event will be games and activities, photo booths, face painting, get your royal name, princess friendship bracelets, superhero, make a superhero shield, and a superhero stay-fit obstacle course. In addition to meeting some princesses and superheroes that are fictitious, we'll also meet some real local superheroes with the police and fire department for Boynton Beach. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Joe Karam. I live at 457 Northwest 1st Avenue. I have a private motorcycle shop on 421 Northeast 7th Avenue, which is just north of Boynton Beach Boulevard on Railroad Avenue, actually, between the tracks and Railroad Avenue. I just, I have a private motorcycle shop, and I was just granted my manufacturing license by the State of Florida Department of Motor Vehicles, and I build like one to three motorcycles a year. And my next, the only way I can sell my motorcycles is if I get a dealer license. So I'm asking the city, the Commissioners, if they would take into consideration to grant me a dealer license so I could sell my motorcycles. If there's any information that you need, I have a packet with my shop, or you can go online.
You can, if you want to leave the packet with our clerk here, we'll get somebody to contact you about that. See what needs to be done in order to make that happen.
All right. I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll look into it and let you know. Thank you. Next person? Next person? Oh, there you go. Sure. Yeah, go back to the mic, though, because we got to record it.
Hi, my name is-
Wait a minute, let him finish. He wanted one more thing.
We're neighbors.
Go ahead.
One more thing I'd like to add. Owner of the building is here, Mr. John Snow, and he approved, he would grant me permission to sell motorcycles at his building.
Well, we'll look into it in our building and department, see what needs to be done, if it can be accomplished.
Thank you very much.
Yes, now you're up.
My name's Audreyke Dance Gerger. I live at 331 Northwest 1st Avenue, and I'm a little nervous. I've rewritten this so many times. My project discussion is on that West Seacrest project going on from Woolbright all the way up to Boynton Beach Boulevard, which I am a part of. You do know I own the 1927 historical house. It's all walled in with concrete, not fencing, but concrete. And I had to go to Lake Wales. I talked to Aaron, and he said that they were going to try to do something. He presented to me to do the concrete up to my front gate, which they had taken my sidewalk to the road away, and so I could have additional parking there. And then they were going to put ground cover because I have no grass on my property. I brought that up before. I do not mow. I do all my landscaping, but I have absolutely no grass, nor do I intend to mow this piece of property you put on. Okay. I came back from Lake Wales. I already went through a lot of stress in Lake Wales. My house, someone took all the copper wiring out. They took all my fans. They took all my air conditioners. They broke a lot of things, gouged holes in walls and doors. I had to come back into my driveway, coming, and I had to stop at my gate, and there's a ditch right at my entrance to my house. A ditch. Now I'm stuck with a ditch and a grass. And I've asked you, my property, I'm the only one in the whole district of the Seacrest project that has a concrete wall, and I cannot move it. And I need parking. The driveway was built in 1927. It's very narrow. It's very restricted. I had to move all my landscaping to widen the driveway so we could get out on both sides. I had to dig up trees. I had to move blocks. Then you put the water meter into the front. And you did that, you raised all the soil. Now the soil washes down on my driveway. I have to sweep it constantly. I've put bricks there. We're running over them. It's a disaster. I've had company come. They had to find a parking space. I have found out I could put four cars in my property. All right, now we have to move them. Okay, my tenant's a teacher. I come from a meeting, and then I have to knock on the door and tell her, "Please move the car," because she has to get out at 7:00 in the morning. So I have to put my car in, then she has to put her car in. She's already damaged the side of her car coming into this narrow driveway. I've already damaged the side of my car. We had company come and stay with me.
Go ahead. I'll give you just a little bit more time. You need to wind it up.
Well, the company had a park across the street. She parked in the road and got $800 worth of damage to her car. Something's got to be done. This is horrible. Bringing garbage out, I have to move the cars. Bringing all the tree cuttings, I have to move all the cars, because we can't park in front anymore. Now, eventually, originally you had said, Aaron said, "Do a design." I did a design, but was never given to, I guess, the meeting. He never picked it up, and I had given it to Lenda Hall, and she said she was going to go to the meeting. Instead of putting grass here and a ditch where my gate is, that was going to be the parking area, so that at least we have parking.
Well, part of that is city swale, I believe. You know, where they're putting in the piping and all, that's why they dug it up. And you've been parking there, I guess, forever, but-
Yes, 20 years.
Yeah, but that's city swale. It's not a parking lot for you. How many people live in your house?
Right now, it's, there were three of us, and I had company. She had company.
As we're talking, four or five cars, you know, that's, anybody would have a problem parking them. So it's not-
But it's a narrow driveway.
-our job to provide that parking space.
We have to get everyone in the, in, first it was my backing out. I had to park behind a neighbor's truck. Then my guest had to park in a vacant lot on vacant property. My tenant had to move her car and park behind on a vacant piece of property.
Okay, well, that's a parking problem we can't solve for you.
It's horrible.
But leave your drawing with the clerk here. But I believe you've already talked to several city people already about this problem.
Yeah, and you were going to do an adjustment, because I'm the only house that has that wall, concrete wall around it.
Well, leave that there with her, and we'll look into it again and let you know what can and can't be done. You can leave, you can keep them. That's all right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest 5th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I just wanted to come tonight to publicly thank this commission for my reappointment to the CRA board. I truly look forward to working with you again. We've accomplished a lot. We have a lot of irons in the fire, and I want us to work together to move Boynton ahead. We don't have to go out to dinner, but we do have to work together to make Boynton Beach the best city that it can possibly be, and for the betterment of its citizens. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hello, the town. Just kidding. My name is Robert Pollock, and I live at north end of Boynton Beach. I've been living in Boynton Beach now for the last 40 years, 20 years of them being military.
Do we have your address?
And my thing I want to come up in is thank you guys.
Can we have your address?
Oh, my address? Okay, 210 Northeast 27th Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. And I want to come up and thank you guys for finally groundbreaking in Martin Luther King quarter up there. And I think it's going to be a great project, and now that I'm retired, I'm going to keep y'all foot on the fire, because I don't like promises made can't keep. So I'm going to, now that I'm going to attend, attend all the commission meeting to see how this project going. So I'm going to be a pain in your butt. Thank you.
You're welcome to do that. We look for a lot more projects there. That's what we want.
Herb Suss, 1711 Woodford, Boynton Beach. I've been talking for many months about sea level rise. I'm a member of the Climate Action Coalition, and I attend monthly meetings. And I want to let you know that Canada's glaciers are melting, so maybe California will get some water. We're getting unprecedented sea level rise. Greenland is now green. The glaciers are melting. Florida, in fact, Miami, will be, will have a surprise party by 2020. They're already getting inundated with backflow of water. $484 billion worth of seacoast property on limestone, which is basically porous, and we get, if we get hit with a storm like we did with Sandy, Miami's in serious trouble. It's on a good part of South Florida. And I think, and I've been doing research on this, we have to do something. I wish somebody up there on the commission would call Governor Scott or do something with the state, because we face a serious situation. And I would like to see somebody up there step up, because your job is to protect the people. Sea level rise is here. It's not going away. And by 2025, I think we've already reached a point of no return. And if people get scared, that's just the way it is, because it's an extremely serious problem. I have done research. Rick Scott, anybody in state government that mentions anything about climate change can lose their job. You can't make their up or get reprimanded. That's free speech. This is like, he's like totalitarian. You can't make this up. It's done. And I hope the newspapers pick this up. I've done daily research on this, and I'd like to see somebody up there protect the, protect my interests, protect the future. A lot of us may not be around to see it in 2025 or 2030, but it's here. My personal opinion, and others, and maybe people up there on the diocese there, we've reached a point of, I think, of no return with sea level rise. In Broward County, they're building a mile-high plateau. Why? One mile high? So that maybe we can grow some crops if we get inundated with water. It's happening right now in Broward County that they're building this thing. And I just about, and I'm a fighter, and I think everybody up there knows I'm just about giving up. People in the, out there should start getting wise, because if you want to invest downtown here, you want to start building, we may, we should curb our building on the seashores, because it's reached that problem. And it is serious, and I think the commission and somebody up there, again, get up there and do something in Tallahassee, because-
Thank you.
-we've reached a point of no return. And this is about it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Sonny Garcia, Vice President of Rolling Green. I reside at 1631 Northwest 3rd Lane. I'm here to thank Commissioner McCray for being at the Vietnam Memorial Celebration there, the unveiling of the monument. I was talking to the Vietnam veterans, which I am one of them. We're very pleased with the speech that you made. It touched our hearts. And from the bottom of my heart, and from the bottom of the other guys that were there, we all thank you. And it was just a great speech, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Whitley. I live at 5503 Wishing Star Lane, Green Acres, Florida. I always point out that I live in Green Acres, because I think the fact that I live in Green Acres, a lot of people want to work with me, because I'm not a threat. Makes sense? But the reason why I'm here tonight is just to share, I'm representative of Martin Luther King Committee, and I wanted to share the candlelight vigil that will be happening April 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This candlelight vigil, it commemorates the death of Martin Luther King, but we also want to invite other folks who have been affected by violence. Everyone's been affected one way or another, and we just want to come out. We're going to light a candle. We have a lot of different things, and we're just going to heal together. So we wanted to publicly invite everyone. This is an inclusive event. Martin Luther King, he did a lot of work, not only for African-Americans, but for everyone. And we want everybody to just bring their good memories of their loved ones, and just come out, and we'll bond and sing kumbaya and roast some marshmallows and feel good. So, no, we're not roasting the marshmallows, but we're just going to feel good and heal as a city. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I think we're going in the right direction. We're going to, I love Boynton Beach. I'm involved as much as possible, because I just love it. I love when the commissioners could work together to make our city better. I love, Clarice, you're doing such a good job. Thank you very much. I got one minute and 17 seconds left, and I want to use up every second, because I never know when I'm going to get another opportunity. I always share with anyone that'll listen, that I would never think in a million years that a little skinny kid from Jamaica would have an opportunity to talk to people that make policies and that will shape our city. So I appreciate the opportunity. I don't take it lightly. And I'll see you on the 11th of April from 6:00 to 8:00, and we're going to have a great time. Amen.
Thank you.
My name is Vassoud Atefi. I do not live in Boynton Beach, but I think I may have earned the right to address the commission, because for the last 15 years, I worked with Palm Beach County as a traffic performance standards administrator, working with your great staff here in the city. And I have, we have been in charge of developments, traffic, safety, circulation, and everything. I have put together a summary of my past 15 years' experience working in Palm Beach County and in South Florida, and I would like if you would allow me to make a presentation to this body. I will leave my card with the clerk, and it would be a great opportunity. I think you'll enjoy, and we can all benefit from the presentation. I can-
Then the presentation-
...presentation to you before-
Concerning the presentation concerns, what is the-
Traffic.
Traffic.
Traffic and development.
Okay.
Traffic related to development.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Anybody else wish to address? Okay.
My name is Mary McCarthy, and I live at 216 South Federal Highway. I came tonight because I understood that there was supposed to be a discussion about the red light cameras, and I understand now that that's been tabled. I have just a question that maybe somebody could give me an answer to. I know last week in court, the cases were dismissed. It's my understanding that the judge also said that any cases going forward became moot. I happen to be one of those people that are in limbo. I visited the police station yesterday and was told that they could not do anything. I would have to send in for an administrative hearing, which I did. I will be leaving Florida on May 1st, and I asked for extenuating circumstances if they could hear the case before. But I guess I'm just wondering if they've been dismissed already and going forward have become moot. What's the limbo all about?
I don't know what the limbo's all about. They have been dismissed, and that, that particular judge said the ones, furthermore, anything coming forward was going to fall under the same thing. But the, I can tell you, I'll just tell you this, at this point, I believe there's going to be an appeal, appeal of his decision.
Okay.
So that'll take some time.
So now, I was told by the person over in the police department that I had to file for an administrative hearing. If you guys are going to appeal it, and I've already put in for hearing, am I going to get now penalized because I was doing what I was told to do?
No.
And have extra costs added on?
No.
Okay. Do you know when this appeal may happen?
You don't know. The courts, you have to, you put the appeal in, and when they hear it, it's up to the courts. You never know.
Okay. Because he seems to think that I could get a hearing before May 1st when I leave.
No.
I can't.
I'm not having any hearings, no.
You're not having any hearings.
Suspended at this time.
So as an out-of-state person, what do I do now?
Go to where you planned on going.
Well, I'm going...
Just go ahead and don't worry about it.
I'm going back home to New Jersey.
Good. Go and don't worry about it.
Oh!
Don't worry about it. Go.
Okay, so I already made the, sent in the information with my address and phone number and everything.
We got you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
You're covered.
I appreciate it.
Where in New Jersey?
I live in Monmouth County.
Bergen County.
Uh, well, I'm a Hudson County lady from the beginning, Hoboken, where Frank Sinatra came. Me and Frankie. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Have a good, have a safe trip.
Thanks very much.
Sir?
My name is Joel Merzke. I live at 4727 Starkwood Lane in Boynton Beach. My question is similar to what that young lady just spoke about. I too have a ticket, and pay date, or the day that it has to be paid by, is April the 14th, which is a week away. Would you suggest I pay it or not pay it?
It's up to you. I can't, I... We can't give legal... I'm not an attorney. I can't give you legal advice.
If I pay, if I pay the ticket and they're, they dismissed the law, would I get, you think I'd get a refund?
Probably not because you are, they're not saying, judge didn't say people weren't not guilty. He said you did break the law, is what he's saying, but he just threw the tickets out. I don't understand his, I don't understand his logic either, but that's why we're appealing because we think we're on good ground. We think we're doing it the right way. So, which just depends on, but if the appeal says no, they're going to go along with the judge, then it all falls flat, so.
And again, you don't know when that meeting is going to be.
I have no idea.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
I'm sorry. Anyone else wish to address? Commissioner, item's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Audience, go to administrative. We have some appointments, appointment to city commission representative and alternate to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. I'm currently that representative on League of Cities, and I also serve on that board. They appointed me as one of the large city representatives. I'd like to continue that if that's all right.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
But, need an alternate. Who's been the alternate? Do we remember?
I think I was...
Is he the alternate?
Yes, it was me. I was the alternate.
They want, is there a...
Somebody else wants to do it?
Somebody wants...
I'd like to.
Want to do it?
Make a motion to Commissioner Merker?
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Next one is the, appoint a city commission representative and alternate to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, I think. Mr. Fitzpatrick, have you been doing that one?
Yes.
Do you want to remain on it?
Sure.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. And we need an alternate for that. Anybody want to be a backup, an MPO?
I'll bet.
Go ahead. No, I'm trying to find out when do they meet. No, I want you to have as much as you want to.
I think they meet, my...
Thursday, third Thursday of the month from about 9:00 to noon.
Since Vice Mayor's...
9:00 to 10:30, 9:00 to noon, somewhere around that.
Thank you. Since Vice Mayor's volunteer in motion.
Vice Mayor's, there's a motion to make, Vice Bill, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Appoint a city commission representative alternate to the Coalition of Boynton Beach West Residents. That's Cobra. I believe the Vice Mayor's been doing that.
I've been doing it since I've been elected. I enjoy it. I made some working relationships.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. An alternate for that? Anybody want to be an alternate to Cobra?
I'll serve as alternate.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I probably won't have to do anything, but I'll do it.
Why not?
Is there a motion to Commissioner McCray? Is a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Appoint a city commission representative alternate to the countywide intergovernmental coordination, coordination program. You want to be that?
Yes, please.
Anybody want to?
Motion.
Is there a, motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. We need an alternate for that. Anybody want to be the alternate?
Mayor, I believe that the city manager is the alternate for that particular one.
Okay. Very good. We'll leave, do we need to make that a motion?
So moved.
Make the motion to make the city manager a second? Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Appoint eligible members of the community to serve on the boards. We have no appointments tonight. Go to consent agenda. Item A was pulled by Commissioner McCray. Approve the 36-month lease with the bankrupt of Orlando, Florida for Ford, Ford...
Focus.
Focus.
Cars.
Cars for code enforcement, three Ford F-150 four-by-two crew cabs, two for detectives, one for training unit for a monthly cost of $346. I'll leave it there. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad to see the chief and Mr. Howard both at the mic. Okay, I'm having problems with this. First of all, because it says, uh, a monthly cost, $346 for A. A means one. A Ford Focus and $400 for A Ford F-150. Do I have my figures right? Is this what they're charging us for each individual car? $346 for each individual car?
Tim Howard, Director of Finance. Yes, it's $346 for each Ford Focus and $300 for each Ford F-150.
And it's $400 for each, so we got...
Three of the one and four of the other.
Okay, can you tell me, how much will we be paying a year rental? That's what I ask. Total.
The annual lease for, for one Ford Focus is $4,152, and annual lease for Ford F-150 is $4,800.
Okay, sir, I'm requesting that you do the math. Give me times 12. Tell me what we're going to pay for, you know, the total per year.
For all of the F-150s, for the three of them total, is $14,400, and for the Ford Focus is $16,608.
So we're spending like $30,000. We can't do any better. No, I'm, I'm serious. I'm, you know, this seems like an awful lot of money for rental cars, you know? I'm not in the car business, but this seems like a big bite.
Really not that much for rentals for that really isn't.
And the department did get three separate quotes, and this was the lowest for the vehicles.
I think the purpose is essential for the police, and I think that's the most important, one of the most important issues to think about is, is it helping our police? Is it good for our police? And of course, is it good for the citizens? And the idea that things are updated and used properly, uh, to me is, I don't like phrasing it this way, but a no-brainer to make sure the police is running properly, police force is running.
Okay, stay right there since, you know, I did not finish. Thank you, Commissioner Merker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I know you're sorry, but anyway, that's fine.
I'm not sorry. Then how's that? No, I take it back.
My whole take is, right, my whole take is that I need to find out, do we, are these budgetary items, I'm, I'm just saying, are these line items? And if so, you know, I did not see lease agreement. So you all, tell me where was it located?
Yes, it, they are budgeted, and what's not, what doesn't show under there, the two line items that show under fiscal impact, though, it cites the division, which is administrative and support. The last four digits, 4440, is rent, rentals and lease payments. So it's in the operating budget.
What is that amount in that operating budget, sir?
It's, it's split between the two, and it comes up to...
What is that, sir?
The budget part?
The budgetary part? What is the operating cost that we voted upon? I'm just saying for the budget.
It is...
Leave him alone.
They need a calculator.
We voted on it.
Yeah, they were, the funds were approved in the budget.
I'm aware of that, sir, but I need to know what was the amount. I don't want to vote on something and we might be over budgeted. I'm, you know, I need to know, and I have a right to ask the question.
Not, not doubting that at all.
It's, Commissioner, it's not in this item. I can get it for you. I know it was budgeted. It was budgeted in two line items. I don't want to get, throw a number out that may not be correct.
You know, it's, you know, that's my problem. I'm just saying, you know, I'm going to be voting for something, and I don't know what is the budgetary amount, whether we approved it or not. I'm, I need to know what was the amount. That was the question I'd asked today, but I, I'm just saying, you know, it's the citizens' money, and I want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing. You, you did not answer my questions, but okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Show the motion passes four to one. I'd like to have a motion just to approve the rest of the consent agenda for the record.
So moved.
A motion's second. Any other discussion?
Didn't you hold it? Didn't you post something also?
No.
Oh, I thought you did.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Okay, that takes us to bids and purchases. Approve the purchase of a new replacement vehicle is approved by the fiscal 2014-15 budget in the estimated amount of $1,416,608 by utilizing the following contracts. Florida Sheriff's Association, I won't read the contract number, Florida State Contract Number, City of Venice Bid, number 2999-14. National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number. All agencies have complied with the public contract bid requirements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to the first public hearing. The first item was tabled. Item B, approve the new site plan request for a four-story, 77,897 square foot, 116-room town place suites by Marriott Hotel and related site improvements located at 2450 Quantum Boulevard on the lot with OIH Office Industrial Hotel. Use option in a PID Plan Industrial Development District applicant John Costas, North Boynton Beach Hospitality LLP. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion's a second. Any other discussion?
I have, I have just one quick question.
Yes.
John Costas, 8205 Lake Worth Road in Lake Worth, Florida. Very excited about this project. I just, one quick question is the, I was looking at the site plan, the parking, it looks, it's going to be very close to, is what, the Hampton Inn there? Are you going to be sharing parking there? Is there some kind of barrier? We're, we're self-contained on the site. There's no shared parking. And what's going to, what's the, what's going to be the self-containment? A fence, wall, what's? Well, there's landscaping there now. There's a, there'll be a landscape buffer between the two parking lots. Okay, so just landscape buffer? Yes. Okay. There's a ficus hedge there now and some trees. Right. So different separation. Absolutely, yes. Thank you. That's all I had. That was my question.
A motion's a second.[1589.11]